All right, and while he queues that up, we have our hard copies now. So go ahead.
We'll go ahead and get started.
Yep.
Thank you. The first line I want to orient you to is our organizational structure for the Department of Finance. So we have eight offices in the Department of Finance, and this is the leadership team for the department. Mohamed Balla, the CFO, we have two deputy CFOs, Dr. Tina Wilson and Ms. Yolanda Carr, who both oversee five of those operational departments. To my far left, we have Sean Gabriel, who's the director of our Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Right next to him is, of course, Ms. Carr, who's our deputy CFO, who oversees the office of the Controller's Office, managed by Ms. Nia Johnson, as well as our Financial Systems Team, led by Director Sterling Thomas. Dr. Wilson, to my immediate right, is our other deputy CFO, who manages the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy, as well as the Office of Revenue, managed by Chief Lawrence Davis on my far right, as well as the Office of Enterprise Risk Management, led by Jerry Deloche, who's in the audience. We also have Office of Dead and Treasury, managed by Chief Courtney Knight, who is here, and he'll be going up and down because we actually have a pricing today. So we've been very busy. And of course, in the CFO's office, we have Robert Moses, who's the director of our Office of Administration and Legislative Services. Thank you very much. We're really excited about this past year, FY24. We've accomplished many great things throughout the department. I wish I could highlight them all, but unfortunately, I can't. So we just want to take the time to talk about some of the great things that we did this last year. Last year, we issued $671 million in airport revenue bonds. And the majority of those revenue bonds were designated as green bonds. This is the first time the City of Atlanta issued a green bond. This was a follow-up to last year's Moving Atlanta Forward issuance, which was a social bond. You could take our word for it that this is cutting-edge work, but as you can see here, the bond buyer has also touted the department's forward-thinking financial strategies as a mechanism for its continued kind of leadership in this space. We've also have been working diligently in revamping the Office of Revenue. And much of that credit goes to Dr. Wilson and Chief Davis, who've really helped us, guided us into a new area with that office. We created a Collections and Lean Division for the office that really helps us follow what's owed to the city. And to date, that office has brought in $7.4 million in delinquent business taxes, as well as $2.6 million in delinquent excise taxes. And we're going to continue to focus on that effort going forward in FY25 and enhance those operations further. And finally, you know, we have been working closely overall with Ms. Carr and FSS team and the Controller's Team to really be more efficient in our financial reporting, use the best tools at our disposals to help us make decisions. We've consolidated numerous financial reports, enhanced the delivery. In fact, we coordinated closely with the Department of Human Resources for an accounts payable program that helped us reduce our accounts payable backlog last year. And we're still continue to work on that front to make sure that we're continuing to be operationally efficient. For FY25, you know, again, can't highlight the all of the work that we're planning to do, but there's some great things that we're looking forward to next year. One of them is our modernizing our payment processing systems and our financial documentation. So we've heard loud and clear from a lot of staff members that Concord Business Solutions could benefit from enhanced services. So we're looking to build that, but also implementing some virtual payment card options that will make it easier for our departments to transact as we go more into an online payment world. You know, the legacy systems of checks and ACHs kind of slow a little bit. So we're looking at having more cutting-edge technology that helps us transact better. In terms of our policy and legislative reforms, we, you know, want to modernize the code. So some of the code items regarding to the Department of Finance are outdated. And so we're looking to see some additional efficiencies in the way that we transact on behalf of the City of Atlanta. So you'll be seeing some code amendments coming up for you guys to consider. And then finally, another innovative program from our Office of Enterprise and Risk Management is the launch of the Minority Surety Program. And what this program essentially does, it allows our vendors, underrepresented vendors, to pilot on an eight-week training program that helps them understand what it really takes to go through the surety bond process and be successful in that process. So it aims to give them the tools and the knowledge to be able to go through that process. And then it partners them with a surety company that can guide them through the process and let them know what surety companies are looking for and how to be a successful applicant. And culmination of that program will allow them to actually submit an application to a surety company and hopefully be able to be bonded so that they can compete on some of this work. This program is being led by Jerry Deloche and is partnered with our Department of Aviation. And we're very excited about the potentials of those collaborations. The following slide shows our positions count by fund. So as you can see, our total FTE operations for the Department of Finance are about 177 FTEs. Currently, 152 of those are filled. And of the vacant positions, the 25 vacant positions have all been posted and actively recruiting. And five of those positions, we are interviewing for, and three offers have already been made. So we continue to work on attracting bright talent to come join the City of Atlanta. The next slide shows the comparison of our FY24 adopted budgets or FY25 adopted budget by fund. So of course, majority funded by the general fund, but we do have some funding allocations from the enterprise funds with Department of Watershed Management and Department of Aviation being the higher participants. Next slide, please. And the final slide here, again, compares the FY24 budget to the FY25 proposed budget, breaking down the request for personnel services as well as other expenses. Going into the FY25 budget, there's a slight increase of $383,000. And you will see that half of that portion is in personnel. And that's really for allowing us to fund some extra help positions that were converted to full-time positions within the office last year. We've also reduced, and that's kind of offset by a recalibration of our benefits calculations, and that's just right sizing it to make sure that it reflects the most current projections. And in terms of supplies, again, the increases due mostly to return-to-work and in-person staff. I've already talked about the significant contributions of the collections team. So we also have allocated funding for additional vehicles for them to go out and do some additional code inspections and make sure that the businesses that are operating in the City of Atlanta are doing so in the right manner, that they're paying their bills and that they're doing what they need to do on behalf of the citizens. That concludes the prepared remarks for the department, and we'll turn it over to any questions that you guys might have.
All right, thank you. We've been joined by Mr. Winston and Vice Chair Juan. I'll start off with a couple of questions. So going to your slide, there's a line in here saying that you intend to modernize governance structures and ensure compliance with best practices. What does that mean?
So really essentially means to modernize the code. So we've had conversations about looking at some of the outdated portions of the city code that allows us to be more efficient. So allow Robert Moses to add a few more clarifying points there if needed.
Robert Moses. Yes, so some of the code amendments we're looking at to modernize include things like the occupation tax provisions and the excise tax provisions, just to bring them into line with current state law as well as operational requirements, and also electronic needs as well to enable us to do things electronically and have the authorization and ability to do that, to move things a bit quicker for our customers.
So would that include the items that you've mentioned to the vice chair and myself?
That's part of the items. You'll see some further code amendments coming later this year. We're waiting on a fee study to be done to add to the occupation tax provisions. Once that's done, we'll include those fee recommendations in that paper as well.
So the personnel, so overall, you're gaining 20 FTEs, is that right? Opposed to gain 20? And are they going to any one or two particular destinations, or is that just across the organization?
Many of those positions are in our Office of Revenue as well as accounts payable and Controller's Office is where we have the bulk of our positions. So the Office of Revenue, since we came back into business and we've added the capabilities of the Leans and the Collections Team, that there's a good portion of the additions to those offices.
All right, and then your vacancy rate currently, or whenever this was published, was a little north of 17%. What has it historically been, or what's the range of what it's been historically?
So I would say historically, we've been in that range of 15% to 20% vacancy. I say, when I've said this last year, and I'll say it again, sometimes with the Department of Finance, we tend to be victims of our own success because we onboard personnel that know how to transact in the City of Atlanta. Sean Gabriel and our budget team loses a lot of talent, but he also has to be quick to onboard a lot of talent. So this last year, I think we're fully loaded now with budget. But usually, people enter into the Department of Finance, they learn how to work within the city's structure and organizational needs of the city, legislative, budget, payments. And they tend to have a good skill set that's attractable to the other departments and other enterprises. And they find growth opportunities to go into those other departments. And we champion that and we help them through that process. So our turnover cycle tends to be a little bit higher because of that. One of the things that we've been doing is also looking to make sure that there is a progression, a career progression in finance, and then that we're also kind of comparatively paying for comparable positions across the enterprise. We don't necessarily want to, you know, have people doing like work and other enterprises being significantly paid differently. And thanks to the HR department and the commission and everybody who was working on that class and comp study to address some of those issues within the City of Atlanta.
All right, and then your senior leadership team never changes. So beyond the obvious, which is they love working here, what do you attribute that?
They're amazing. This senior team here is amazing, and they're all could easily replace me tomorrow and become a CFO, every single last one of them. We'd have to give Robert some math tutoring, but he's a smart guy. And he'll get up to speed quick, you know, he's a...
Attorneys can do math, too.
But he could, he's really smart, and he's catching on quick. But I couldn't be more proud of this leadership team. They are phenomenal in all their respects. We get, sometimes have disagreements, but we learn how to work through them as a team and get things done.
So there are slightly lower solid waste and water waste water fund budgets. What accounts for that?
Sure. So those tend to be, you know, personnel support that helps helps the Department of Finance. With solid waste, in prior years, we were doing some of their collections and billing activities in the Office of Revenue. Those positions have since shifted back to solid waste services. And for Watershed, it was just kind of realignment of some of the needs that we require in Treasury as well as Office of Revenue. Sean, if you have any additional context you want to add, you could.
No additional context. To your point, you're absolutely correct. Our operation is split-funded in some aspects, and it's related to personnel or some contractual obligations that we support in some of the enterprise funds.
What are some items that typically or annually make up your or contribute to your purchased contracted services line?
So our purchase contract services tends to be primarily some of the systems that we utilize for Controller's Office, as well as some additional needs from Treasury Management Services and car payment services. Dr. Wilson, you want to add some color there?
As CFO Balla said, there are a handful of contracts that we house within the office, within the Department of Finance. Your typical things, Xerox, but we have some specific tools within Treasury. We have Tyler Technologies, which is used by the Office of Revenue. Some of the tools that we use for financial reporting, we do Houzz as well. Oracle, the portion for Department of Finance is housed there as well. So those are the bulk of what we keep within...
So that line is relatively flat compared to last year. But then in the past, it's gone up and down, 3.6, but then 1.3, then 5.3. So I assume there were a couple of expensive one-offs in those years?
Yeah, so this year, we onboarded a number of financial advisors. So we have, that's why you see the increase for FY25.
Y'all happy with Oracle?
Yeah, yes.
Our great common-law spouse. That's all I have, anyway. Mr. Juan?
All right, my apologies for joining late. I wanted to talk about the vacancies for a second. Is there any generalization in terms of the nature of those vacant positions? Are they concentrated in any particular area, function, level? Or is it all kind of across the board? I just want to see if there's an indicator of where our headwinds are.
So I'd say that they land within our two largest offices, which is in General Accounting and within the Office of Revenue.
Okay.
Those offices by themselves house about 50 or 60 people, 50, 60 people apiece. So they tend to have a little bit of a higher vacancy rate there and also have a wide range of skill sets. So but over the course of this last year, when CFO Balla mentioned, we've been very active in recruiting, filling those vacancies, also standing up the office and revenue for collections.
Is there any commonality in terms of the level? Is it entry level, mid-level, management level, or just all over the place as well?
It's up and down the office, yes.
Okay, that's helpful. I just, you always want to look at that and see if there's a kind of an indicator of where we aren't as competitive, but if it's pretty broad, then it makes me feel a little better. And I'm sorry, I also missed the conversation around excise taxes. What do you consider in the realm of excise taxes? And be careful, because I am going to go somewhere with this.
So in regards to excise taxes, that is basically your hotels, hotel motel, your car rentals, as well as you have your alcohol, you're taxed by the drink as well. So there's various different areas in regards to excise tax. We have been, most recently since the creation of the Collection Division, gone after the excise tax areas. And as stated by CFO Balla earlier, we've collected roughly about $2.6 million outstanding debt in that area.
That's helpful. And I mean, I think, you know, when we talk, I know when my constituents talk about resources for services and all that, I mean, a lot of them will point to hotel motel because of Airbnb and kind of off-the-books, off-the-record type transactions there, and then also alcohol taxes. And that was really where I was going to go at, because, you know, I think the city is probably leaving a lot of money on the table. And we had this conversation in the Alcohol Task Force. You know, there are a couple of reasons why the city should be looking at this, not just from the revenue side, but also, as we've seen recently, some of the troubles we've been having with operations that are disguised as restaurants. But if the city's never going back and really looking at collections, percentages, requirements, then, you know, we are contributors to the challenge as well. So I was curious as to, now that you've got that office stood up, what are the intentions in terms of really diving into those two areas? Or are those really the two kind of hot areas that we think we are ripe for additional revenue recovery?
But to your point, just probably two weeks ago, had a meeting with the Atlanta Convention Bureau, as well as the Georgia World Congress Center. And we've come together to create a task force to help one another to address the hotel motel, as well as short-term rental, as well as we have a partnership now with the Georgia Department of Revenue, in which they are assisting us with the so-called restaurant nightclubs. And so we have, most recently, last week, submitted several names to them to assist us in those investigations.
That's great. I mean, I appreciate, I'm glad to hear that, because I do think it's an area where I think a little bit of effort will reap a lot of benefit. And it just adds another tool to communities in terms of being able to address some of the quality-of-life challenges that we have as well, both in terms of resources as well as enforcement. You know, tax evasion is a big thing. And I think, hopefully, now that you've gotten the state involved, perhaps, you know, they'll be paying attention as well. See if I'm wanting to add something.
I wanted to add something, but thank you very much. And I want to do give kudos to Councilmember Norwood, who also talked to us about the same issue and gave us some significant insight with regards to the distributorship relationships with the State of Georgia and the City of Atlanta, and making sure that the people are following the appropriate protocol to procure and sell alcohol through the distributorship system. Because once they go out there, system is very difficult for us to even do our audit work. So coordinating with the state and Chief Davis's efforts there is going to be, is going to yield, I think, a lot of positive results. We tend to see, more than revenue perspective, I think, that you mentioned is bad actors tend to be bad actors across the board. So if they're not following rules in one area, they're probably also not paying water bills and doing other things as well.
I mean, there's a whole suite of things that they're probably not doing, but we have lenses into all of them, business license, water, all of those. So I think it's, I'm really encouraged to hear all that. My last thing is really just an observation. I do think y'all do a really great job. I mean, in terms of watching the economics, adjusting, I mean, we talk about trying to maneuver fit financially in a very uncertain period with refinancings or even revenue collections, projections, budget management, all that. You know, at some point, I hope, once we get out of some of this uncertainty and turbulence, the best way from, in my opinion, for that to be recognized is bond ratings. I think those are, the agencies are very meticulous, thorough, and diligent about using that to assess the fiscal management and condition of a city. So I hope that at the appropriate time, y'all will continue to kind of go up and swing, because there'd be no better affirmation than what we see y'all as doing really, really good work. But that public recognition, I think, is one y'all deserve. So hopefully, at the right time, y'all will go up to New York and ask.
Yeah, absolutely. That is on Chief Knight's to-do list. In fact, is he here? So Chief Knight has a pricing today. So he's literally wearing two hats, he's back and forth, and we're market for Atlanta Fulton County Rec Authority transaction today. So, you know, the office continues to be busy, they continue to be innovative. Revenue office, budget team, everybody coordinates well, and that synergy is really benefiting the City of Atlanta.
All right, we have Ms. Silver Street and then Ms. Norwood.
Thank you, Chair Shook, and thank you, financial team. I appreciate it. Great presentation, as always. I really just wanted to weigh in to thank you all for the hard work that you do all year long to make sure that we have the budget that we have. We have a budget that we can all be very proud of. And everyone knows that budgets reflect our sense of community, and it reflects what is most important to us in the city. And I do believe that you all do a good job of making sure that the administration is doing an excellent job of taking care of our citizens. And since I'm one of those, I really do appreciate the work that you do, I do. And I'm glad that you took time during this presentation to reflect on some of the wonderful work that you've done last year in this last budget season. And it really is monumental, it's things that people aren't always doing, other people aren't doing, and that I'm sure they will follow us as they always do, because your team leads by example. And in reflection, I mean, like the innovative financial space that you're working in, where you're leading the nation in green funding around our airport, the world's busiest and most efficient airport in the world. That's a big deal. No one is comfortable outright leading in green space, especially in financing it. And I think that you guys stepping out there and making sure that we're doing that and leading the pack is a testament to why our budget is so sure in the way that it is. And I thank you for that. I'd love that you also included the minority surety training. That's amazing, because what we know for sure is that inequity happens when you leave people behind or when you don't look to see who's not at the table. And this types, these types of trainings ensure that in the long run, there's an equitable factor there. And that's important, because we are Atlanta, and that's what we should be doing. And thank you for that.
We're excited about that program, because it really helps guide small businesses into where they're at. Because sometimes you're not ready, right? And you need to understand early in the process that you're not ready. There's probably some additional things that you need to do to get your organization ready before you can step onto this field. And having a clear understanding of where you're at in that process and how to take the next steps internally, so you can come back maybe a year or two years later, other than just getting a rejection and not knowing why you got a rejection,
Right.
helps in the long run. So it becomes more efficient, because then you're getting organizations who are ready to compete versus people who have a strong desire and a want, but may not necessarily have the capabilities yet.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. We take so many things for granted, and a lot of times, it really is just that confidence that is needed. When you don't get something and someone, no one ever takes the time to tell you why you didn't, you probably won't get it next time either. But when you're doing this kind of work that you all are doing to make sure that you're getting that training done with the groups that's missing from the table, that ensures that in the long run, the table will look more whole, like it's supposed to, especially here in Atlanta. And I appreciate that. Also want to thank you for truly understanding how important it was to lead the way in that $30 million bond for the senior facility that's coming at Johnny White Park. Again, we're talking about minorities, we're talking about seniors, we're talking about green funding. Those are innovative ways and truly showing that we are taking care of the whole family and the whole city, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to take this opportunity to let them know that I'm so glad that I'm on council here with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Mr. Westmoreland and Ms. Norwood, you're up.
Yes, I appreciate the fact that the mileage rate has not been increased. I am very grateful for that. We're still going to get sticker shock because prices have gone up. Housing, housing sales have increased, the prices have increased dramatically. And so people are going to, we don't know what the assessed value of every single, or I don't, of course, know every single parcel, but I would like for us to be prepared this summer with two things. One is what you need to do next year to get a homestead exemption, which ones there are, how they work, just simple. We don't need this complicated. We need any citizen in any part of our city to be able to say, oh, that one works for me, or these two work for me. What's the timeline? How do you do it? And we need that information out there this summer, or we need it ready to be distributed. Because again, we don't know exactly what people's tax bills are going to be, but if we had sticker shock, I would love for our finance department to have been ahead of the game saying, we have two things. We have the 3% cap, which will take effect, but there's no reason that we shouldn't be leading the way to help people with their tax bills as a finance department. And then if we get a lot of new homestead exemptions, we all deal with that. But the people will be, I think, very grateful that it was a city administration effort from the finance department to say, here's what you can do.
We'd be happy to do that and happy to coordinate through the NPU process as well to get the word out across the city for everybody.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thank you all for your great work. I am, as my colleagues have stated, I am also very grateful to y'all's work. Thank you.
Mr. Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo all the sentiment that everyone else has said. You know, my relatively short time on council has been great dealing with each and every CFO. It's amazing the level of detail that you have on reports, the communication you have with council is just outstanding, and so I just really appreciate you all doing a deep dive with us on these numbers and making sure that we understand them. Even just last night, a classic example was that I was in a neighborhood meeting, and a question came up about taxes, and I was quickly able to pull up a document that you all had, explain that process to them. So it just makes our job a lot easier, just having the tools that you all provide.
And your presence here reminds me of the need to remind my colleagues who are here and those who are taking copious notes at home of the need to socialize any budget amendment proposals with the finance team, with the mayor's people, whoever you think the appropriate person is, so that we avoid stuff being lobbed in from left field, you know, on the floor and we're confronted with something that has not been properly socialized. Last, like, two or three years, you know, it's been, we've done really well with that, so I hope everyone maintains that. While you're here, what's your latest thinking on dealing with pension in terms of timeline?
Sure, yeah. So we have scheduling now a series of employee meetings, touch-based meetings with different employee groups in smaller settings, so that we can talk to the employees in police, in fire, watershed, aviation, solid waste, and assess their own needs individually, because each one of them has a different perspective and different ways that they think about retirement and age, and the demographics tend to be different. So we want to share what those examples would look like for the different groups, allow them to ask any questions. After that, what we plan on doing is having the legislation introduced later this month, earlier next month, but we are aiming for a January 1 implementation date. Once we get the communication pieces buttoned down and making sure that the legislative process, which also has to go back to the Pension Investment Board, is scheduled. I really want to give hats off to Ms. Amber Robinson in the back over there, who's been helping us through the process, as well as Kristin Dennis and other members of the Law Department. Mr. Deese is over here, and they've been working really hard to make sure that that process is one that's going to run smoothly and efficiently and be able to come in and out of council in the appropriate manner so that we can meet that January 1 implementation date.
All right. Lastly, I'll toss my little bouquet by saying, acknowledge the possibility that I might like working with y'all more than you like working with me. At this point, there's really not much I can do.
Somebody saved that recording.
And at this point, there's really not much I can do about that. So, all right, if there's nothing else, finance, thank you for giving us a.
Thank you, and I just, I did want to add one thing while I acknowledge the senior team. Each one of the chiefs here does have a deputy chief supporting them, and they're equally as strong, and our directors and our managers continue to amaze me in the level of work that they've done. We've done a lot of promotions internally. So you see, you know, Chief Gabriel's a classic example of that, of somebody who has come in through the ranks in the finance department, Deputy Chief Malcolm as well, just kind of growing internally through the talents that we have. We've seen the same with the CFO Carr, as well as Ms. Johnson, who's a controller. I mean, we really have a deep bench, and it's not just with the executive staff, but the rest of the senior team, the directors and the managers continue to be real strong as well, too. And internally, we have great partners. I've talked about law, they help us significantly, help us so much that we stole Robert from the Law Department to come help us. But they're great partners of ours, and of course, Mayor Dickens and his administration who continue to kind of help us and guide us in making sure that we have a collaborative vision in the priorities that the executive office wants to set to make sure that we have the tools in place and the resources in place for them to be able to effectively fulfill those promises to the public. So thank you.
All right, and that brings the finance department Summer of Love Tour to a close. They have given us a 17-minute recess, at which point we will return at 10:30 to hear from the mayor and his team regarding the executive budget. Thank you.